Good evening. It's seven o'clock. Let's start our meeting. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to get an approval of the minutes from our January eighth meeting.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those nay? Like a, you know, before I'd like to accept the agenda we currently have. I have no changes myself.
I'll make a motion. We accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second that.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All those abstaining? Thank you. Under Communications and Correspondence, we have a proclamation for Sean. I'd like Bobby to please read.
Proclamation in memory of Sean P. Manning, whereas our community wishes to show its sorrow of the passing of Sean Patrick Manning. And whereas a lifelong Portland resident, born to Thomas and Elaine Manning on March 11th, 1966, the youngest of seven children, he was the beloved husband of Terry Manning, father to Stephanie and Hernandez, delight of being a spectator. And whereas he was dedicated to the best interests and welfare of his fellow citizens by chairing his family's annual Thanksgiving food drive for the Portland Food Bank, each time yielding hundreds of bags of food. And whereas Sean faithfully served the town of Portland as a member of the Portland Volunteer Fire Department as a firefighter, EMS, and officer, as well as three years on the Board of Selectmen, and was to be appointed as first selectman to complete the remainder of Ryan Curly's term. And whereas Sean gave so devotedly in that he earned the respect and friendship with whom he came into contact, and our community has sustained a great loss in his death. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of Sean Manning's contributions to our community and its citizens, we hereby express our deep appreciation for his dedication to the progress of this community and extend to his family our sincere sympathy upon his passing. Acknowledged the 22nd day of January year 2025 by Michael Pelton, First Selectman, co-signed Ryan Curly, Farmer, First Selectman, Board of Selectmen, John Dillon, Michael Hernandez, Robert Hetrick, Tim Lavoy, Ed Sharr, and James Tripp.
If a second is needed, I'd be honored to do that.
Thank you very much. It's been a hard couple of weeks. It's been very emotional for so many people, but he will be missed and we'll continue honoring him as best we can. We also have a proclamation for Joyce Jent. I was fortunate to attend an event a couple of days ago at the Lions Club with Jim. And Jim, if you can explain what we did and what happened there?
Yeah, we, there was an event. It's an annual event that's held by Eastern Connecticut Lions. And in this particular event, the Portland Lions Club voted to recognize Joyce Jent as our Humanitarian of the Year for 2025. And I'll read the proclamation regarding that. It says proclamation to Joyce Jent, Humanitarian of the Year 2025. Whereas the Portland Lions have chosen to nominate Joyce for the Humanitarian of the Year for 2025. And whereas some of Joyce's accomplishments through, throughout the years include being founder of the Portland Little League Auxiliary, a co-founder of the Portland High Sideliners, chairperson of the Portland Residential United Fund, and tri-chairperson of the Middlesex Hospital Cornerstone Fundraiser. And whereas in the past 35 years, she is best known for organizing and building the Middlesex Hospital Vocal Chords, a group for hospital employees to share their love of music sponsored by Middlesex Health. They have grown from just a few singers to nearly 100 members strong. And whereas the Middlesex Hospital Vocal Chords have performed worldwide, worldwide, from the Hartford Bushnell for nine eleven tributes, to the World War II Memorial to honor Freedom Flight Veterans, to across the globe to sing at the Vatican in Rome. And whereas through fundraising, Joyce spearheaded the group, spearheaded, the group has provided over $87,000 of scholarships for youths entering a medical or musical field. Joyce also has insisted on an annual food drive for the Middletown Amazing Grace Food Pantry, collecting over 12,000 pounds of food items and donated over $20,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Portland, Connecticut, along with its residents and the residents of surrounding communities, express great appreciation, admiration, and gratitude for Joyce Jent's dedication to our community and thank of her excellence. Congratulations acknowledged on the 19th day of January in the year 2025 by Michael A. Pelton for a selectman town of Portland and Portland Board of Selectmen John Dillon, Tim Lavoy, Michael Hernandez, Ed Sharr, Robert Hetrick, James Tripp.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that together for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. It was, it was really impressive to see not only Joyce, but all the other people in Connecticut that have really performed in the town. And it was wonderful to see that. We had a good contingent there too.
Yeah, this is for the, basically the four. Eastern Connecticut Lions represent for our district, the eastern half, the four eastern counties. So it's, it was quite a large gathering.
Any public comment?
Ben Sir, 139 West Cotton Hill Road. Just a couple of things. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Rick, for stepping up. Congratulations, Mike, on your first meeting.
Thank you.
I was pretty happy to hear John might throw his name in for the Strategic School Committee. Pretty impressed. I think if that vote happens tonight, that it will be great. I think he'll bring a lot to the table and I just wanted to personally come up and thank everybody. So, thank you.
There was less than 30 seconds. That's rare.
Okay, close the door.
I'm quite impressed by that. So, any other comments?
Kim Hannah, Three Butler Lane, Portland. First of all, thank you for that proclamation. That meant a lot. I wasn't aware when I thought I was coming tonight that that was going on. But I have a question. Maybe it's a suggestion for you guys. It's been 35 days. And it's been a long 35 days. And I don't know how many of you remember, but these meetings used to be at the library in the Mary Flood Room. And one time I asked Ryan, I said, hey, you guys going back to the Mary Flood Room now that COVID is over and everything? He goes, ah, everything's set up there. I think we'll just stay where we are. Maybe it's time for you guys to rethink that. There's better parking at the library. There's better lighting at this library. Nobody, nobody in this room deserves to go through this. None of your families deserve to have this. It's a small step. I know it's a big step right now. You guys are coming up on your budget hearings. You're busy every night and you have to move everything. But for all your sakes and all your family's sakes, I think it behooves you to think about it. Even from the point of view, I used to come to the meetings more often. Right now I need a chauffeur till I get my ice fits, but, but to leave by myself, if I want to leave before the meeting's over, it's dark in that parking lot over there. The library is much better lit. There's just a better safety factor there for everybody and especially for you guys that have to do this week after week and night after night. I think it's time to put it back in your thought process. I would feel much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Really appreciate that. We have had some discussions about that over the last couple of months about bringing back. It's been suggested by a couple of others as well, so. And stairs and, yeah. We will, we will, we will talk about that and do something like that quickly. So, all right. Thank you, Kim. I really appreciate that. No, thank you. Our hearts go out to you. Any comments or public comment online? All right. Committee on Solidarity, I haven't spoken to them at all. I don't know if they are online for their reports.
Hi, I'm here.
Very good.
I can put my video on if the host allows me to. I accidentally put it on earlier. Okay, here we go. Hi, I'm, thank you, you know, thank you all for having us. I mean, we come every once a month to report to the Board of Selectmen. And I just want to start by saying, last month I had been planning to come onto the meeting and thank Ryan for all of his support during his term. I would, I just want to acknowledge that and also that we're very grateful to you, Mike, for stepping up to lead the town. And that we, on the committee, are deeply satisfied with the loss of Sean. We have been looking forward to working with him as well. And especially his support for the community food drive that he organized that you just mentioned in your proclamation. We had been planning to collaborate with him on that this coming year. And we just want to, you know, honor that all of you have gone through a lot in the past month and his family and his family at the fire department and everyone that knew him and loved him. So we just want to honor that. Thank you for everyone who's coming together to lead Portland and carry on his legacy. I also just want to give an update that we do have a change in leadership with the Saldery Committee. I have been the chair for a little over a year. And at our last meeting, we voted that Cindy Tyler will be our new chair. She has been on the committee for about a year as well and is a wonderful person, very committed and very caring. And she'll, she'll be great and will be staying on the committee as well. And I know also that you have on your agenda tonight to consider the nomination of Jackie Davis, Pride Work Group. And for a long time now and has been contributing a lot. So we hope that she will be joining us and as an official member of the committee. And we still have some openings as well. So we look forward to welcoming other members in the future. I want to highlight that we have an event coming up next month. It's called Voices of Portland. It's on the banner of the town website. So thank you to our help agents, to, at the town for putting that up. It is going to be a wonderful event. It's a panel. We had one last year called Gallery of Portland. Some of you attended and spoke highly of it. And we're very excited. We have a grant this year. The, we're collaborating with the library, the Historical Society. The Historical Society applied for a grant for TT Humanities. So our budget is, we have a budget this year. We didn't really have one last year for this event. And it's, it's going to be really great. We have, we have some members of former Portland residents. We'll be speaking about their experiences growing up as part of the Black community, living under the bridge in Portland. And we are going to have a memory recording booth as part of that event where other people can share their memories. We're going to have a reception this year. The Saldery Committee would like to help to pay for the food for the reception. So that'll be, if I didn't mention that, that'll be Saturday, February 22nd. We'll be sending out flyers and, and you can register on the library website. So we hope that many of you can join us. We also, as part of that project, were able to do a podcast interview. We're working with Dave Kuzminski. And he recorded an interview with another former Portland resident named Barbara Miller. And her interview will be shared soon as well. So we're excited for that too. We have an event that'll be coming up in May. That'll be a book discussion for Asian American Heritage Month. And that'll be for adults and young adults. We'll have more details about that soon. And we're working with, we're, we're trying to collaborate more with the Portland schools and all different town departments on, also specifically getting students involved in some of our events. The Pride Work Group collaborates with the school GSAs. And we're looking at ways to partner with the senior center and the police department. So that's been on our agendas at meetings. We're also still working on the State of Black America Report. We are playing together a discussion group. We have several community members that are interested in participating to share their experiences of being Black in Portland and being part of multiracial families so that we can continue to see how as a community we can be as welcoming as possible to everybody. And we have our duty team, our annual duty team celebration. You can see the date. That will be Saturday, June 14th, at the Portland Middle School again. And have a lot of partners working on that with us. So we'll share more about that as well. So we just want to thank the town for all of your support. And if there are any questions, you can ask or contact us at any time. Thank you so much.
No, we really appreciate all the work that you do also. You do a lot behind the scenes and it's a great thing for Portland, what you can do. So I've also passed these out to everyone and we're going to encourage as many people to come there from the board as possible.
And Liz, thank you for your time as chair. I know when you're chairman of any size group, it always turns out to be more than you expected. And you've done a great job. And I know Cindy will follow.
Yeah, I do. I'd like to nominate Sam Newsome to that committee, please.
I'd like to second that.
I'll third.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Sam, you're in.
Thank you, Sam.
Congratulations. Sam, you'll get a whole packets of information on what to do and the whole bit. So that'll come to you in the next couple of days. And if you have any questions, reach out to us. I appreciate your willingness to do that. I'm encouraging anyone that's watching or listening, get involved in town, do something. Sam expressed an interest a couple of weeks ago and here he is. So I think he'll be a fine addition. And we got, we have a lot of work to do on that from now to next year. So, very, very nice. The Committee on Solidarity, do we have a nomination for that?
Yes, we do. Liz just.
Qualifications. They are very excited to have her skills and talents applied to what they do. I think she'll be a full member of that committee and will give back a great deal. And they're very happy to have her. So I think that'll be, it'll add to that committee and add to the town. All right, ready for the vote? Are all those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. So next, there is a, there is a position open on the Strategic Capital Improvement Committee that I was on and now have resigned effective, I believe, January 14th.
And I have a nomination for that.
Hold on one sec. So I've resigned. You have a nomination?
I do. I would like to nominate John Dillon to fill that position on the Strategic Capital Improvement Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
I would bring up a point of order that the charter requires that a position that was appointed to one, a person of one political party would need to be offered and filled with a person of the same political party. And less than 45 days has gone by in order to, to avoid that.
Can I make a nomination then?
Sure.
At this time? Not out of order?
There's a nomination. I think we have to vote.
Does that, just out of curiosity, does that provision apply to when we're appointing it? The requirement for the committee as a member of the Board of Selectmen? I don't know if it, I don't know if that provision would apply. I mean, if it applies, then, then fine, obviously. I think we have two qualified candidates. The, the logic is, is really that there's a lot of folks already associated with the Board of Education, serving on that committee. And I think, you know, Tim, you, you, again, a lot of experience, been there since, I think, 2015, because you and I started on Board of Ed together. I just think from a, we have just better, probably from a perception perspective, to have a different voice in the room on that. But that, that's, that's the logic of my nomination. But I don't know if the, I'm very curious to see whether or not that would actually apply to a Board of Selectmen member.
I don't see why I wouldn't frankly, just based on the, the very fact that when we looked at the first selectman, order of replacement, it was, it was clear in the charter, that's exactly what the requirement was. And I don't, I mean, that doesn't say that in particular, but the other point I just want to make as we're talking, is Rick had asked a question about whether he could make another nomination. If we followed the precedents that we followed last time, we'd be nominations for vacancy. There were two nominations made at the same time. So I don't know why there wouldn't be.
But if the first, but if my nomination is being questioned from a legal perspective, do we need to get it clarified before we vote? Because I wouldn't want to vote one way or the other, whichever way it flies, to have a situation that's potentially problematic.
I, I agree.
But I realize tomorrow night's meeting is an important one too.
Right. Well, that's my point too, right.
Well, here's a path forward as well, because, because I don't know if that qualifies for this. I, I assume that does. It sounds like it does, but I'd like to talk to our town attorney and get clarification on that as well. What I would suggest is, you both are interested.
I'm willing to attend the meeting tomorrow night.
Well, I, I think because tomorrow's meeting is going to be a pretty important one, if I'm not mistaken, Ben. They're talking about the numbers and there needs to be, I don't believe there'll be any kind of votes tomorrow, but it's going to be a listening in. So I don't think that would create a hardship until I can get a definitive answer on this thing. So if everyone's comfortable with that.
I'm not, but, you know, it's up to the board to decide. And I think it's pretty clear based on all past practice, if you had a person on a board or a committee who resigned, it would always be of the same political party unless the 45 days had expired. And I don't, I don't see a carve out there for, you know, if you read the proclamation, which I did, there was no special caveat there for, you know, any special circumstance with board members. It was.
Was that committee made up to have minority representation? Do we have two Republicans on it now?
By charter, we have minority representation.
But with that many, aren't we supposed to have two? Do we have two on it?
No.
I don't. I believe it was, this would be a selectman representation, not a party representation. But again, I, I agree with Mike Pellon. If we, if we got to go see counsel on this, we should to make it right, but.
Right.
Isn't that out of order? Shouldn't he be at the.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you very much. No, please.
There shouldn't really be any cross talk, but if there is, it should be, it should be open to the public.
Right, right, right. So what's.
Again, my, my thing was, it was a representation from the Board of Selectmen, non-party affiliate. It didn't matter. It was supposed to be a representation. Again, if we, if you want to put, if you want to go seek counsel on this and figure out what's right and wrong, we can postpone it. I probably would assume both candidates would be at the meeting tomorrow regarding this. But I don't know. Mike, do you make the call?
Right. Bobby, what do you feel? What's your feeling on this?
I, I think if we're doing this, ask the town attorney.
I agree with Bobby and Mike Hernanis.
Honestly, I just, I, I don't want to put a vote forward.
Right.
And, you know, if, if I were nominated, but there was always a question hanging whether or not it was appropriate. I don't want to be involved in discussions and on the committee that may ultimately be problematic. I think it's, I have no problem with going to the meeting tomorrow night as John Dillon, listening in, getting informed of what's going on. And then, once you get an opinion at the next meeting, we can make this decision or just defer to the other person that's there if it's.
Tomorrow, sitting in the audience is the same thing as sitting at the table. There's no vote on anything. No, no, I mean, it's like, by not being seated, you're not going to lose out on anything. Because it's all just informational still.
Is it, was the agenda posted? And I'm fine waiting. That's fine. But I just was curious. Was the agenda posted saying that there's no action items tomorrow? I, I didn't see that when I looked at the agenda.
From what was said last night at the Board of Education meeting, Friar is coming forward with some facts and figures that were requested at a prior meeting, but I don't believe there's any.
Right, but that's not the agenda. I would defer to the posted agenda.
So the posted agenda, if, if I may, Mike.
Oh, here it is. Sorry.
It's discussed, I'll just skip anything that's not relevant. So it's approved the minutes, blah, 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 public.
It does, I mean, I can, it does say right here, there's no action items.
Discussion on elementary facility needs and public comment.
The, the only thing I would, I would suggest is if there are two and they both want to attend, maybe we can have them as guests. So if you, either one of you had a little input, I don't see how that would be harmful.
Yeah, I have no problems. I just want to make sure that we're legally clean.
And I respect.
And, and not only that though, because this is the most consequential project in the town.
Absolutely.
In a long time, I think, making sure it's good. So I'm going to listen to the board. I'm going to put this off. I will talk to the attorney tomorrow and I will keep everyone informed on that. It should take, it should take one phone call. It should be within a day, but I'll let everyone know on that.
For the record, I'm, I'm good either way. I just want to make sure that I, I don't inadvertently.
And, and if I could.
Put myself in a bind.
Hundred percent. And I don't doubt either one of you would do a great job. There's a lot of things I think you both would be objective. So I think either way, the committee wins and it continues the discussion. And you both know enough about the project. So I will find out. I will let, I'll let, you know, the worst case is in two weeks at the next meeting, which should correspond with, I believe, the next one for you guys. And, right, at least we'll know that.
How often do you, are you meeting?
Weekly, weekly.
It's every week.
So we have, so we have.
It's an aggressive schedule.
It's a very aggressive schedule.
Purposely.
All right. I will, I will be there tomorrow night as well. So I may see some of you there. All right. We're all comfortable with that?
Yeah. I'm fine.
Okay. All right. We have a couple of expired folks on.
Do we need to withdraw the motion?
Do we need a motion for this?
No, we just need to withdraw the motion, I think.
I was going to say, it'd be the. Well, you got a motion in a second, so I think you got to withdraw the motion.
You, you made the motion, so you want to withdraw that.
Do we withdraw or table it until the next meeting, I guess is the question.
Table it until next meeting. I don't think that's.
Okay. So let's table this issue until the next meeting. It keeps it live. It keeps it active until we go. All right. All right. Thank you very much for the feedback on that. We have a couple expired folks on the commissions, Donald Roy and.
And I apologize. I want to cycle back to that. If you're reaching out for the question to the attorney regarding the rule of whether it stays with the same party for appointment, we should also. I'm better on my first take on these things. So I would ask that we, we also ask the attorney about the, having two nominations put forward concurrently, rather than having to dispose of one nomination before we can address a second nomination. Because that was, that was an unusual presentation of that, for me at least.
No problem. I'll make sure I ask that as well. Any other questions the board wants me to check with the attorney on regarding this matter? I think it's pretty clear. Okay. I'll keep everyone informed on that. Let you know as soon as I get an answer on that. We have a couple expired folks on various commissions, Donald Roy from Ethics and Joe Spada from Housing Code Board of Appeals. We also have some of the resignations. Edward Sharr from Airline Trails to join us. Thank you, by the way, for jumping into this. We appreciate that. Also from Riverfront Access Committee. Thank you for doing that, joining us again. For Water and Sewer, thank you again.
It was a three for one trade.
Just going to keep on saying your name, right?
It was worth it for us, that's for sure.
And Joe also, Joe Spada from Conservation Commission resigned as well. And Rodney Spooner more recently resigned from the Veterans Affairs Committee. He's, he's been struggling with that. So he has resigned and he will be missed.
Mike, we have one nomination to replace Rick on the Water and Sewer. We have Joe Spada.
Yeah, I'll second that. I think I might have seconded it last time.
Any discussion?
We discussed it enough last week.
Enough? All right. All right, let's call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, passes. Welcome, Joe. All right. Before I go, no, actually, no, I can't. Let's go to the next one. Every year, Don Guin comes and we have to make sure we do the funding for the emergency services that we have in town. So this authorization authorizes me to be able to continue that. We get a $5,000 grant a year in order to, to do that. We get a five thousand dollar grant a year in order to, to do that and take care of a stipend as well. Like to read this and, actually, does anyone else want to read this?
I'll read it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll move the authorizing resolution of the Portland Board of Selectmen certification. I, Michael Tierney, the Town Clerk of Portland, Connecticut, to hereby certify that the following is a true and correct copy of a resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen at its duly called and held meeting on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, at which a quorum was present and acting throughout, and that the resolution has not been modified, rescinded, or revoked, and is at present in full force and effect. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems necessary or appropriate. And further resolved that Michael A. Pelton, as First Selectman of the Town of Portland, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Portland, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Michael A. Pelton now holds the office of First Selectman, that he has held that, the office, since January eighth, twenty-twenty-five. A witness whereof, the undersigned, has executed this certificate this twentieth day, January twenty-twenty-five. Michael Tierney, Portland Town Clerk.
Any seconds? All right, discussion?
What's, what's this five thousand dollar grant?
So it goes for the stipend for Don to do the job of managing and returning emergency services in town, plus any other fees involved with that. So it's been a yearly thing now for twenty-plus years, I believe.
Did we get that from the state?
It is a, I believe it's a federal grant.
If you had any questions, Don's online, I think I saw his.
Is he?
Yeah. Don, Donald Guin?
All right.
I was just curious.
Would the board like to hear? Anyone want to hear from Don? Maybe not. All right, it's okay.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, refunds of excess payments.
I'll make a motion for a refund of excess payments for Yvette Watts Bunting for four thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Motion for a refund of excess payment for A-Car leasing, one hundred twenty-four dollars, two hundred seventy-two dollars and seventeen cents, one thousand forty-seven dollars, forty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right, status and committee reports. Who's got some reports they want to share? Jim?
Oh, sure. So I had, at the last meeting, I let you know that that was the following. Monday was the Water and Sewer and Prox and Rec. Prox and Rec meeting ended up being canceled, so I don't have anything from there. But the Water and Sewer meeting went on. Few things that, that came up at that meeting. One, the Coab Pump Station project is still on hold. We got, we did get a little bit more answers, I think if you recall, we talked about there were some missing parts. Jim Lynch from the department had reached out about exactly where, where the different parts were. Right now, they're effectively waiting for the control panel. And it looks like it's a control panel and, and an exhaust fan. Both of those need to be obtained before they can proceed. It did look like, at least in the email, like they were going to get the control panel potentially by the end of this week, so. So that was, that was good news. The, the production report for the year, if you recall, last year, we finished, we have our take-or-pay contract with the MDC. We're required to buy a hundred and forty-six million gallons per year. In the year, in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, or I shouldn't say that, in twenty-twenty-three, we had, that, that contract's based on a calendar year, not a fiscal year. We had bought a hundred and forty million gallons, so we had to basically buy some water that we didn't use. This year, they did, they were able to get that much tighter. We ended up getting to a hundred and forty-four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand gallons that were, that were actually bought from MDC. So we're going to have a small balance that we're going to have to buy for water. But as, as the former chairman can attest, we're actually better off financially being a little bit under than being a little bit over, because it's much, much less expensive for us to produce our own water. The well, I was actually, I've been heading out to the well site as often as I can to touch base with them. Pretty interesting operation they got going out there, digging, digging a well that's that deep and that, that, that big in diameter. But they're down at two hundred feet, at least as of one o'clock today, they were hoping to get at least one or two lengths into the ground. But I'm not sure where, where that ended up. They've had, it's been, you know, it's been a little bit of a tough, you know, they've had a few tough days. Things were going very smoothly. They had a couple of equipment problems which they've resolved. But now we're dealing with, it's, you know, negative degrees. They're coming in in the morning and they're actually having to melt, you know, basically thaw out pipes because they use water as part of the drilling. So they end up having to, you know, basically use torches and such to try to get, and thaw certain things out. So it's taken them a little while, but they're, they're at it and they're, they're progressing, so that's all still moving along. That is, oh, I think the only other thing I think it's probably important to note, and these are, I want to say, I don't think these are the officials' numbers, but we were given preliminary numbers from a budget standpoint. And it looked like this year, we ran about fifty-four thousand dollars over, well, I won't say over budget, but fifty-four thousand dollars, spent fifty-four thousand dollars more on water than we took in. So we actually had a slight negative balance, much better than what we've had in years past. But the last couple of years, we've been in the black, with the preliminary look is just slightly in the red. I'm looking forward to seeing, I think, the final report when it comes out in the audit, to see exactly where we ended up. But part of that is, it looks like we may have actually sold a little bit less water this year. So that may have been the difference, which, you know, gives me hope with some of the, some of the projects coming online, that are going to be coming online. Brainerd getting active, things, you know, and ultimately the SPAD, so.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Mike, Greg?
I attended Board of Ed's meeting last night, and I tell you, it was cool. The, the principal from Valley View and three of the teachers, I believe one of the social worker, one was a social worker for the school, came in costume, their superhero costumes. They all had their masks on and their capes. It was great. They said this is what they do in their assemblies, they have their superhero character assemblies. They showed some videos and the kids just love it. And Dave, I, I thought it was great. And they, they, each, each month, they have a pledge, they try to, to have the kids work on the pledge. But, you know, it appeared that it was, I think, great for the kids, but it also appeared to be really helping morale with the teachers. It looked like they were really enjoying themselves, and I give them a lot of credit for coming in costume. There, there were updates, the usual student representative update, and they just really did an outline of the clubs and the club activities. Superintendent's report, which is related to their, their proposed budget and their budget workshops. He indicated that they had at least forty-five letters that were received in support of retaining positions at the school. There was discussion and approval for upgrading the Spanish textbooks. I believe they said they were from two thousand seven. And it was, you know, said that with, especially with other languages, meanings and things tend to change over time, and they wanted to make sure that they upgraded these, so that's something that is going to move forward, trying to upgrade those books. And most importantly, there was some more detailed discussion, but they decided on a superintendent's proposed budget, so they have something to come forward to us with.
Greg?
Anybody else?
Aye.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
One thing that Jim didn't mention on Water and Sewer is a couple of major water leaks have been repaired.
Yeah, we actually talked, we did talk about those, but we talked about them.
Previous?
Yeah. But that, no, but go, go with that still.
Well, I.
There was one new piece of information you can throw out that I think was really important.
I didn't bring my Water and Sewer notes, so this was.
Okay, so, do you want?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's, it's a good note. So there was a question, we had done some leak testing, which hadn't been done in a while, which got accomplished, and that was important. Those were the leaks that we identified, a thirty thousand gallon per day leak and a forty thousand gallon per day leak, which is about twenty-five million gallons per year if those are not found. There's been some other smaller leaks that they're working on and trying to close out. But one of the questions that had come up was how much of the town was leak tested? And the report that we got back is that that actually had encompassed the entire town.
Okay.
So, so they actually, we got a pretty good view of the leaks, which is another reason, by the way, we may have seen nine million gallons less overall used on the town. It may, until we see the final report, we'll see, you know, how the revenue numbers compare. But there was overall less water used, but it was about eight or nine million gallons, twenty-three to twenty-four.
But still, if the twenty-five million gallons came from MDC, we paid for it, and it went into the ground. And we didn't get to charge for it. That was, that was my point I was trying to make in it. So it's a good thing that we fixed some major leaks.
Jim, and I got a question for both of you, because you're on, how often do we do the leak testing? And what does that cost?
We'll have to check and see. I think this year, this, at this time, it was actually contracted out, and I don't know what the contract cost was to do that.
Okay.
We had, and we believe we still have our own leak detection equipment. The issue has been personnel. This board in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, actually, we approved an extra half in FTE for an extra person for water. And that's one of the things that we're hoping to do with that, and that's something we actually have to look at now in terms of filling that position for the back half. But one of the things that that would allow us to do, because we don't do enough leak detection, we don't do enough even just the normal maintenance things, like cycling valves and things like that. All the things you should do to make sure that you don't have a problem when you need to go, you know, to run them. You want to make sure you're exercising those valves like every six months, and that we're doing more of that. That stuff we'll be able to do, you know, at least have a better chance of doing more of that in-house once we start getting a little bit of, you know, muscle built into that group again. But Bob, I can, I can ask that question, we can get an answer for that in terms of what that costs.
Yeah, I'd like to, actually, I'd like to know. I'd like to, I might have it in my notes, but I don't remember right now. I would just, I'll comment on the Riverfront, River Access Committee, because we finally have had some things moving. And we filed our NDBB study with DEEP, which included a, a plant study, an animal study, a muscle study, and a frog study. We also, part of the negotiation with DEEP was that we would put land where this northern Atlantic leopard frog habitat was into a conservation easement in two areas. It was one at the Wong Gung Meadows and the other at the field property where, behind Tilcon, where we're trying to get this access point to the water. So that was good news. And then shortly after that was filed in December, we found out we needed to do an archaeological study because the area, like three, four hundred years ago, I guess, was habit, inhabited by Native Americans. So that, I was just talking with Michael Pelton earlier today, and that's going to move forward. And I don't, I don't think it's going to be anywhere near as drawn out as the other studies were. So project's moving along and, who knows, John, maybe, maybe by two thousand twenty-six, we'll be seeing some actual work done down there.
Get our kayaks in the water.
Yeah, maybe before we're, while we're still on this earth.
So can carry them.
Yeah, right. And Airline Trail is in good shape, and I still see people out there on it, even in cold weather. I was on it today and there were lots of footprints, cross-country ski tracks and even mountain bike tracks. So despite the cold weather, people are using it. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Mike, Bobby, anything?
No, planning and zoning's been quiet.
Ask him.
No.
Good. I just have a couple things. Segueing off of, of, of the Airline Trail and whatnot, I was on a meeting today with Rivercock, and there's a lot of money being put into connecting a lot of the trails, completing the, you know, from, completing the Portland section, the East Hampton section. They're trying to get over the bridge, it's a middle town connected to the Farmington Trail, so there's a lot of money and time and effort being put into that. So it's going to be nice and connected as we're going, while we're on this planet.
Speaking of that, actually, if you don't mind me asking a question on that. Actually, have we heard anything where East Hampton is with that section to connect the Portland to East Hampton? I, I thought that they had gotten a grant.
They, they had the grant money?
Well, what I heard is they have, they have the grant money, which I think is something like a million dollars. And they're supposed to start on it this year. So that's what was discussed at one of our Airline Trail committee meetings. Now, exactly when, I don't know, but they definitely got the grant. And it looks like they might have started, like, moving some of the lines, because there's, there's power lines going through that section. So I, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, maybe in another year, that's opened up. Maybe I'm being optimistic, but it's moving.
Yeah, I know, I know there's a lot of folks that, that are looking forward to that because of where that, you know, what that connects them to, so.
Well, then you can go all the way, you know, Willimantic and beyond in one.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, the last, the last time I heard was about a year, is what they're guesstimating. So year from now is when they're hoping to have it done and finished, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So a couple, a couple of quick updates. It's been busy last week and a half or so, and some of the big projects going on in town, kind of general view. So Nordic Spa spoke to the gentleman from there a couple times over the last week, and they were going to start this month. They have some issues with planning and, and working on some additional calculations for what they have. They probably will start in early April is where they're looking at. They, they're, they're guesstimating the build-out will be fifteen to seventeen months, so realistically, two thousand seventeen or two thousand twenty-seven, you know, early then, it should be done. But they're very excited, they're looking to spend upwards of forty million dollars on the project. The designs look great. I don't think it's three restaurants, but it's three eateries that they have in there, and they're working out the details, but it looks beautiful. And they are interested in expanding, if they can, to maybe some riverfront property that they can lease from us. So they're looking at making it big and really investing in Portland, so I think that's a great thing. Lot to be done with that. I will keep everyone informed on what's happening with that, but they're, they're, they're looking forward to doing something in town. They feel like this is a great spot for them to do that. On the other side of Main Street, you've got Brainerd Place. The first apartment has a conditional certificate of occupancy, they're already leasing that place out right now. I'm guesstimating in the next four weeks, the first person will go in there is my, my best guess. But they're actively doing that, I don't know how many so far, I haven't talked to Dan in a while, but he wants to get that leased out as fast as he can. I believe they got approval for the second building to start going forward with that as well. I, I will get more details tomorrow. The Starbucks, they're looking at sometime middle of February, is the last date I have. So for those that love Starbucks, it's coming soon, and I'll keep everyone posted on the exact date. They're trying to plan a grand opening for that, or a soft opening, I should say. So that's coming soon. I know this board have been talking about the, the parking lease for Affinity down in, in Lower Main Street. That one looks like we'll have that signed in the next couple of days. There were a couple of small details, I'll fill everyone in on that, once I meet with them again tomorrow. But that looks like it will be done and ready to go by February. We had already agreed on the leasing amount a long time ago, but that one should go forward. I will keep the board informed on that as well. And.
Where is that?
So, do you know where, where the food truck is?
Down under the bridge?
Right next to the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, I think the lease calls for up to sixty or no less than sixty spaces, there's plenty of room in that area.
You discussed that initially, God, it's got a year and a half.
It's been a while ago. It's been a while ago.
They were looking for additional staff parking, so we're leasing that gravel lot.
That gravel lot, yes, and I believe we had agreed on sixteen.
The, the.
Oh, Affinity?
Yes. Yeah, because they, and they just, they just. Yeah, because they, and they just, in fact, I believe they are just leasing the building from Newell, if I'm not mistaken. And another one, so they're, they're expanding down, they're expanding their business. I got a tour of their place a couple of days ago, very impressive with how many people they have there, how they do their business and the expansion. So they're, they're all in. They've got, I don't know what the total is, but they're looking at spending five, seven, eight million dollars just on expanding where they're going to. So we're glad, we're happy to have them, and they are already kind of amped it up, so they need the spacing. Only caveat, the only issue was part of the parking lot is muddy, maybe you'd have some rocks or some, some gravel to level it out. I've already talked to Mike LaStrina, it's a simple fix, but I'll let everyone know what, what that is and what the details are.
I thought improvements were on them, not us.
It was, it was less improvements than there's some mud spots with the rain that they noticed that were significant. Mike looked at it, said it'll take a half a day to do, so I'll let you know more details when it comes out at the next meeting, but it seemed pretty simple.
Because their original plan was they were going to pave it, light it, curb it, everything to meet our planning and zoning regs, but then we said, since it's town property, it doesn't have to.
Right.
So, they, they should be able to pay to have that done.
Right. I'll, I'll let you know, I inherited some of it coming in, but I'll get details. But I think a good point about that, they're looking to expand, and I think that'll be a minor detail, but we should have it done by February, so looking for that. Last thing is the budget. It's budget season coming up, so, you know, we will be, Tim and I, or Tom and I will be looking at that for the month of February. I will try to keep everyone on this board posted on what we're doing as much as I can, and then we'll be ready to present at the end of the month. Everyone has the schedule of the meeting, so March is going to be busy for all of our workshops. We've got a lot to do, so I'm hoping that we can look at every number, look at every department, find the best solutions, eliminate what we don't need, and get the best budget for Portland, so we've got a lot of work to do. Got a lot of work to do. Again, welcome Rick to that fun part, so.
Just in time, right?
Yeah, just in time. All right, that's all I have for now. Any public comments?
It might have only been thirty seconds in the first one, but I just want to basically talk about the Strategic School Committee and what we're doing. I think it's great, I think we have to do it as a town. Reason I'm coming back up here now is, I'm kind of, I just want to be clear, so everybody up here on this table can't say I didn't say it ahead of time, but just so we're all clear. That commission has a major decision to make. It needs to be very independent, and it needs to have representation of the community as a whole. I think that's the most important thing we could ask for. Right now, we're already lopsided, right off, right out of the gate, I want to be clear. I have the Chairwoman of the Board of Education wonderful, great, we need her. We have the Superintendent as an advisor. I have a teacher, I have a para, I have the former and current building grounds, maintenance, all wonderful people. We have very little representation outside of the Board of Education. So what I'm trying to state for the record and to be very, very clear, if the town of Portland wanted the Board of Education to make this decision, then we should have just let them make this decision. I think the reality is, we need independent voices. So, Tim, and I'm going to say this, because this is the type of guy I am, I just say things on the record, you would be the last person I would think at this table should put your hat in the race, because you are, you were just connected with the Board of Education. And I'm not saying that as a negative, I'm saying you just couldn't be independent. So, I want everybody up here to understand why I think it's so important to have an independent person up there, not affiliated with the Board of Education. The reality is, if you look around the town, people are paying attention. They already know there is a lot of Board of Ed representation. These are facts. What they would like to see is independent, people that are not affiliated, like Bobby or, you have a business or work for a company, I would say you're out, but maybe you, you know, it doesn't matter, but you were just there at the Board of Education. You have insight that we probably don't want. We want open, just clean slate, figure out what's going on, what to fix. We already failed multiple times at trying to figure out how to fix our schools. We want this one to go through. We have a great committee so far, I think we're going to get to the finish line, I'm excited to work with everybody, but my point is, whoever you guys pick at the next meeting, it needs to be so far removed from Board of Education, it's not even funny, I mean, I can't state that enough, it needs to be very, very clear, whoever you guys decide as a group, it's got to be a neutral person, as far as no connection right now with the Board of Education. That's so important for the taxpayers and the residents of Portland, to not think this thing is already, the decision's already made, because it's not. I believe we have a good group, and I think we can get there. I just think at this point, the representation needs to be very, very neutral. So, thank you all again.
Ben, before you step down.
Please.
Because I'm new up here.
Ask me any question.
How many people are on the committee?
Nine, and then we have one advisor, the Superintendent. So out of the nine, we already have five that are connected with the Board of Education. We have Carl Johnson, Bob Shea, Jen Martinez, Darcy Palmerly, sorry, Laurel Steinhouser. There's the five. What's that?
Brett Pekowski?
Yeah, but he's, I would say Brett's independent. I don't know him being connected, he's a wonderful person.
Right, I'll just give it a name.
Sorry, maybe, maybe we got more, well, regardless, the whole group is fine. I think we're going to get to the finish line, I think we have a great group. My point was, we definitely don't want the perception, at the very least, to have more Board of Education representation on an independent school committee. That was my point. It's nothing against you, Tim, it's nothing against, I mean, could have any one of you, because if Rick came from Board of Ed, I'd be doing this to Rick right now. The point is, that's, that's the only point I was trying to make.
Rick, the handout we have?
Yeah, I found it.
Subcommittee's third page.
Yep.
Okay. And, and, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, we're going to get to the finish line, and it's already being, if you guys pay attention, and I, and I urge all the taxpayers paying attention, watch these videos. It's already being, the title of it is Strategic Capital Improvements, and, boy, we're going to struggle to do capital improvements. I can assure you by the end, that might not be the outcome, I'm only one voice, but that is the name of our committee, that is our charge, and there's going to be a lot of things thrown around by the end, and then we're going to, as a group, come up with something good. So what I'd like to see is just another independent voice from this committee. I know you'll get it right, and once again, Tim, nothing against you. I think you're going to do a great job as a selectman, I think you did a great job as a Board of Education member. At this point, I just don't think it's the right fit. So regardless, whatever the town attorney comes up with, if they do say it has to stay with the same party, then nominate Bobby. If they say it can go to anybody at the table, or you can all agree, I think John donates a lot of time to this town, I think he's a pretty independent voice, not connected to the Board of Educa, he'd be a great choice, or Rick, or, it doesn't matter, I'm just throwing it out there. You're immediate, you just left there. I think it's a bad look, that's all.
I think you're wrong, but.
Okay, well, the majority of the taxpayers that I've spoken with say I'm right, and that's why I'm up here speaking, and I think perception's reality, and I think anybody that watches this video would agree. So, time will tell. So, I respect that you think I'm wrong, but perception's reality, and reality is you just left there. I don't think you could be independent. If I'm wrong in that statement, say it.
You can't reach inside my head and say that. You can't understand my thinking on that.
No, but I would, I would one hundred percent say on the record, you have Board of Education knowledge.
And that's a feature, not.
There's no back and forth in public comment.
You couldn't get that out of your head. You can't unthink, you know, so the bottom line is.
Ben, your time's up. The Chairman.
Carl Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
And doing a great job. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Couple of things real quickly, I meant to say, so we have, we need Board of Selectment Liaisons for our various boards and commissions. I don't want to do it now, but everyone has that package, look at it. Some of you may want to give me a name that you want to, over the next week or so, please look at it, reach out to me, let me know if you want to make any changes, if you want to add yourself to something. I'm coming off of some of these, but look at that, and we'll discuss that at a later date. So everyone has that packet. Bobby, this one is for you. At the last meeting in December, we approved a couple expenditures. I know you'd asked about what happens to expenditures once it's done, I was curious as well. So the last three that we approved on December thirtieth was, we approved twenty or thirty-seven thousand for the online permitting with Renegus. That is, been passed on to Dan, being implemented slowly, but Dan Parais been out for the last week, maybe another week and a half, but that's being implemented, so that was put into place pretty quickly. I'll keep you posted on that. You had asked about the Riverfront, the pillar project. I think Mike may have seen that when he was in there for the week, it was sent out to the company that's going to do the work. They won't get it for another, they won't get all the materials, it's already ordered for another three weeks.
So there's no stopping that?
It's, yeah, the train order, I apologize, I tried to find that out, but.
That's fine, I just think we made a huge mistake in doing, and I, I voted for it, but the more I talked with Jim and other people afterwards, I think we're putting a Band-Aid on it, where we should be taking on the whole project and doing it all at once.
And I think you might be right, because I know the whole project would have been significantly more. I asked, I asked Ryan Halbrin and Tom, cost-wise, were we getting a good price for that, what they bid, I think twenty-three thousand on it, but we approved up to thirty-five. So I've reached out to John, who's doing the project, and said, listen, with that other twelve, is it possible to finish more, like, what can he do to go beyond eight or nine, or whatever he has? So, so I'm on it, I'll let you know if you want to do a conference call with him, or you will not, just kind of discuss that, because I think that's an important point. And what I want to try to do going forward, because we approve the funds, it goes out there, there's nothing wrong with looking at that, especially before it goes out there. We should do as much as we can before then, but it's worth looking at what we can do to get them to do more work for us, and do extra, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Hey Mike, just while we're, while we're on that topic.
Yeah.
Anybody who's done work around their house, or put a, crushed a tree, a four-by-four up for a deck, you go to Home Depot down the concrete aisle, they sell a bracket that you pour in the concrete, where a four-by-four sits on it, but does not sit on the concrete. And I think that is the biggest potential problem, we talked about it. My concern too, I asked the question, what about the, the van shell too? Because, I mean, that, that potentially can have the same thing happen. So, my only thought is, no matter how we do this, whether we do this in stages or whatever, I would still like to ask the question, maybe to our town engineers, is there a bracket that we could use? When we put those in, it doesn't necessarily need to be something we do right now, you could always go in after the fact and just chop off three or four inches on the bottom and set a bracket in place. But I believe, because I was, I actually, we had a, my wife's family goes down there every year for a family picnic in the summer, and I think two or three years ago, I was this guy that saw it first, I pointed it out to my brother-in-law, who's on the, the Brownstone Committee, and I could see the ants climbing out of the bottom of it, and every one of those is rotten. And I really think, if we replace them, it would behoove us to put those things on some kind of a bracket that holds them off of ground contact.
That was my thought when I was talking with Jim, I've talked to contractors in town, not putting wood back, that we had steel columns, and they were wrapped in composite, they could be stone veneer on them, whatever, so you don't see a steel column.
Or even a pressure treat barrier in between.
It's something that will last ten times longer, and we won't be doing this again.
Right, I agree with you. But I, I think it's a, I think we move forward with what we have, but I think we still have to ask the question, and whatever you do is something that we could do down the road, even after the new columns are in, I would imagine, but I, I think it's something that we have to talk about.
Well, something else too, I mean.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mike, if you don't mind. No, because I actually didn't hear the whole conversation, just because of, do we already have a mobilization date on when they're going to get out there to do those, eight?
So they, it's going to be at least three weeks, they're waiting for the delivery date. They said it should be the middle of February.
And is there, is there any potential for us, I mean, I know we allocated, is there a way to potentially supplement that, so that we could do everything on a single deployment, right? Sometimes, you know, you save money by getting people out, they're going to mobilize and get the tools out there and everything else on the one shot.
I will reach out to, we have, I think, twelve thousand dollars to play with, that we approved up to, so the next conversation will be whether or not that will add a delay to those, because exactly, if you could do all of it at once, or maybe get most of it at once.
Well, even, even if it adds, I mean, if it adds, you know, another few weeks delay, right? As long as it's all set, really, for the season, right? By May, when we open up the bathrooms, we want to make sure everything's, you know, when rental season starts and people are down, they're using events, we want to make sure everything's set. So we have that time, I think, but making sure we're not right back here again would be, would be, I think probably be a smart strategy for us.
I agree, and you guys have seen the pictures of what it looked like, some of the rot that was there.
Oh, yeah.
So.
And that's, that's highly used too. I mean, you don't want any public involved in accidents.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, I know, we had also tried, the contractor that built that isn't around anymore, so we tried doing an insurance claim for that, and we couldn't get it. So, so we've tried to pursue to correct that situation first, but.
Yeah, and I think the, the good news is, it's good for us to make sure, I think it's a good cautionary tale, right? Make sure we're continuing to do the inspections on the van shell, and make sure we're staying on top of the staining on the van shell. Just, it's just kind of heightened our awareness of that maintenance, but it is important to note that the van shell is actually a different manufacturer than, than the, than the actual pavilion is. When we went, what was on the state, on the bid list, when we did the van shell, was different than when we did the pavilion, so it is a different.
Got it. So I will reach out, I'll, I'll let the board know, and see what he can do for us. Lastly, we approved fifteen thousand dollars to move the Welcome to Portland sign in place. Talked to Ryan Halbrin earlier today, and he said that they're waiting for weather to be proper for, for they can put the cement down. But that'll be in that space when you come over the river, from Middletown, right on the right, so that's where it will go. So that's set, contractors in place, we just got to wait till the weather clears up. All right. And I'll continue to try, whatever we have old funds, let everyone know what the status is, if we can approve that. I think the more we talk about it, the more ideas, the better we can maximize the money we're spending on this kind of stuff. All right, and that is all that I have. Anything else?
I just have a couple of quick things. It's not something that can be answered now, but can you talk to Tom, and then we would know at our next meeting, which is our finance meeting?
Yes.
Our capital budget from last year, I don't remember how many items were on it. Which ones have been accomplished? Which ones are still being done, and like, what phase we're in?
Yeah, items done.
Because we're going to start talking about a new capital budget, and we're seven months into the year, so I would hope most of that is complete, or on its way to being complete.
Yeah.
And without getting specific, do we know if we're getting our thirteenth officer? Because I know we were budgeted to, the pay was put in to start in January. I don't know if we had anyone.
Conditional, yes, I'll let you know for sure.
Okay.
I talked to Scott about that, or Captain Cunningham, and yes, but there's some issues around that.
Okay.
I'll fill you in, so.
Last thing I have, we don't have to talk about it, but one of my suggestions, I know we are in the process of replacing a water main on High Street, from High Street to about Clearview, I think is the scope of it. I want to know, and I know Water and Sewer has talked about it, I believe, taking that grant money and looking into replacing our lead connections instead. I think that is more important than a water main that, my father's lived on that road for, since nineteen eighty-nine, and we've had one water main break.
Got it.
So, I think it's more important to get the lead connections out of the water system than to replace a water main that doesn't seem to have too many issues.
Got it. That one, I'll get back, John, I'm meeting with, with Bill tomorrow, so I'll answer.
I think the lead connections are just elbows.
Yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
There's about sixty of them.
Yeah, the goose necks.
And about sixty, I believe, is how many they are.
Are they predominantly, I would assume they're predominantly on Main Street in the older dwellings?
They are, and Ryan told us at his last meeting, State DOT would like to do Main Street, to do a light milling and paving this year, but if we're not done, they won't do it, because they don't want us to dig up a newly paved road over the next three or four years, and me personally, I don't think people that have lead connections should be waiting three or four years to get that out of service.
Yeah, I think even, even another part, and I, and I agree, actually, getting those done sooner rather than later for not only that reason, but also, if we can get that work done before they do the, the light milling and paving, that'll be a lot better than us having to do a much more involved restoration on a state road.
Well, that's the thing, with them knowing about that, they won't pave the road.
Yeah, it's important.
Yeah.
Good point, good point, I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, what do we have, follow-up items, ethics ordinance, I think we could put that off to another meeting, I have nothing new on that.
It's been on there for four years, I remember.
Hundred percent. Review the town charter, so this one we've talked about, and I know we have budget season coming up, what I, what I'd like to put to the board is, let's get through budget season, we have a lot to do, but I think as soon as we are done with that, as soon as it's passed, I think that needs to be looked at and done, it's been too many years, if anyone here wants to either partake in that committee, or get involved in a bigger way, let me know, but I think that's an important thing, and I think we should wait.
Well, I know we talked with Ryan before, and he said, I think we all agreed, that we would all review the charter, and I think after budget season is the best time to do it, because that's when we start to slow down in the summer, and then we all say, compare notes, these are our recommendations, form the committee, and push them in the direction of our.
Agreed.
Five or six recommendations, and whatever else they find on their own as well.
Then we put it to the town.
Yeah.
I agree, and, and, and let's get that done, let's make that something we get done by the fall, and finish it in the summertime and get it done.
Yeah, I think once we get through the budget, there's, there's a lot of unknowns with the things that are hanging up there now, with, with the building project, the school project, the spa, and a few other things, that there may be ancillary things that develop out of it, but I still think that once we get into, like you said, Bobby, early summer, I think it's a perfect opportunity to start that ball rolling, and give a committee something to do in the cold winter months.
And I have.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking before winter months, I'm thinking maybe by fall.
Well, you'll start it, but it's.
No, no.
They generally take some time.
Maybe I'm not familiar, okay.
I have one thing, it's between the general discussion and follow-up items, I know our charter says that we're supposed to be paid a thousand dollars a year, and I was wondering how the board feels, if we take our pay, and instead of receiving it, that we use it to buy tablets for the board, because we say all the time, we have all this paper, when Tom comes in once a month, he hands us a stack of fifty papers, and whether you wanna look up an email, or look at a document that we had three meetings ago, if we all had tablets, we would have everything at our fingertips, and I don't think any of us really are concerned with, you know, we're, we're not up here for a thousand dollars, it, it doesn't mean that, I didn't run to get a thousand dollar check, I'd rather put it to something good, you know, and it's, it's not something that would be a, a one-time thing, you know, like, I don't get re-elected in November, whoever's sitting in this seat, okay, it's their tablet, so, I think it would be a, a good thing for us to look into if everyone, we can talk at a later time if we want to.
That's a very interesting idea, I like that idea.
It's something that we get, that, you know, now, because it would be a town-owned tablet, it would be right in on the VPN and things of that nature, so you have secure access.
Sure, sure, and I'll prepare, prepare for it automatically every meeting, follow along, I like that idea.
Yeah.
All right, I will, I will find out.
Okay.
Give me, give me till the next meeting to get an answer on that, or pry that money out of Tom's hands, carefully.
Well, I just don't want, you know, it's, it's our money coming to us, but I wouldn't have a problem if you take my money and buy a tablet, I'd, I'd rather, I think it's more beneficial to the town, and it's more beneficial to us up here.
Couldn't each individual board member make that choice, for, because I have a tablet, so I don't need a tablet, but, I don't know if other people wanted to do that, I think that's a fine, I brought mine down so the IT.
I don't use a tablet very much.
Yeah, the IT department hooked me up.
Town sign tablet, because of the VPN, like Jim was saying, like, it's more secure if you have a town one, than using your own personal.
Well, then, I went to the town IT department, and they loaded on here what was necessary to make it secure.
But the other thing is too, you have to consider, if there's ever an FOI request, they take your tablet.
I, I'd wanna see the law on that.
It's easy if you use it for town business, that's why I was told, don't use my cellphone, and don't use my personal email, if I ever reach out to somebody, they send it to the town email.
Right, and the town email's available from the town.
Yeah, if you're using it on that, they can ask to see it.
I, I'll look into that, but I don't, that's the first, I've been on the Board of Ed using that for years, and that's never been, it's never been brought up.
Speaking of FOIA, I, there's, there's been a number of FOIA requests to towns all over Connecticut for various things, but we've got a lot of FOIs going on right now.
I, I do it at my work, so, that's why.
All right, I'll explore some different options. All right, anything else? All right, we are about to go into executive session, two executive sessions, for personal matters involving the Director of Public Works and First Amendment extensions to the leasing agreement between Brownstone, Discovery Park, and us, so, everyone, thank you for coming tonight.
I'll make a motion that we move to executive session?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, let's know it is eight sixteen.